Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, good evening. First item of business, we'd like to introduce and welcome our two guest counselors. We've got Kathryn Trotman.
They're scared of her.
They'll be back.
They were both here. I guess I'll get back to that.
It just took so long to start us up.
You're out of order. So, should I call the roll? Or wait for them to come back? Please call the roll.
Guest Commissioner Kathryn Trotman is present. Commissioner Bennett?
Here.
Commissioner Nanki?
Here.
Guest Commissioner Matt Osick is also present. Commissioner Benjamin?
Here.
Commissioner Benars?
Here.
Commissioner Lewis?
Here.
Commissioner Karaviev is absent. Chair McCoyd?
Here.
Okay. We have no additions or deletions. We have public comments. Yes, we do. Steve Emerson, welcome.
Thank you.
You're going to have three minutes. After two minutes, the amber light comes on. After three, the red light comes on. Please give us your address and the ward you live in.
Thank you. I'm 935 Tamarack Street Northeast. I live in Highland neighborhood. I am the co-chair of the Highland Neighborhood Association.
Would you put the mic there for me? There we go.
Sorry. Okay. I'm the co-chair of the Highland Neighborhood Association. I'm here with fellow Highland Board Member Gary Oberry. We're actually here on behalf of our neighbor Teresa, who lives at 960 Tamarack. She has some concerns. She brought up at our last Neighborhood Association meeting. And actually Chuck, in his capacity as our counselor, suggested we bring it directly to tonight's meeting. Her property abuts the South Fair Apartments, which are controlled by the Salem Housing Authority. And I have a couple of photographs here, which may be instructive regarding the conditions there at the property line. The designated smoking area is immediately adjacent to her property, as is the basketball net. She, they have issues with cigarette smoke drifting into their rooms, especially in the summertime when windows are open. Basketball's frequently end up in their backyard, and as a result, other things go missing from their backyard. They've got a lot of traffic, folks hopping the fence. There is a fairly substantial hill of some kind, whether it was an old stump that's grown over, or something like that, that is nearly as high as the fence. So, folks standing in this back corner here have quite an excellent view of their backyard and anything there that may be available. Can I bring these photos up?
Pass them around?
These are all taken from the perspective of the South Fair complex.
Hey, keep going. Your time's running. So, if you've got more to say, say it.
So, we are open to any suggestions the Salem Housing Authority may have as far as how this could best be mitigated. In looking around the complex, it looks like there's not a lot of options as far as reciting either the designated smoking area or the basketball hoop.
Okay. Is that it?
That's it.
Do we have any questions? Commissioner Bennett?
Thanks. Steve, could you describe a little bit of Teresa's circumstance and how she presented herself at that meeting? I thought that was important.
It was. So, Teresa came with her son, who did an excellent job of translating for her. She's made this concern known to us informally for several months now. And it was actually, I think, one of the first times he'd been to one of our Neighborhood Association meetings. And so, that was a nice, exciting moment for both of them there.
Any other questions? Commissioner Bennett?
Yeah. Well, I'll wait till we're, I'm not sure where to go from here to proceed.
Well, are there any suggestions for how you might mitigate this? Or are you?
You know, looking at it, because of the constraints of the site, I think if there were a higher fence, which was not of cyclone construction there, that may help with, you know, the fumes and all coming from the designated smoking area, and would probably also help with, you know, both the sightlines from the South Fair complex and the quantity of basketballs that seem to end up in their backyard. So, that may be one of the few practical solutions available to us.
Okay. Commissioner Bennett?
I'm not sure where on our agenda we can ask questions of Mr. Welch. Can we do it now, or how do we do that?
I would.
We haven't had anyone from the public show up here before.
Ever, I think.
Ever, yeah.
Commissioners are welcome to ask staff comments at any time. You might want to wait till after the speaker's had a chance to sit down.
I'm done. Thank you very much.
You're done? Thank you for coming to bring this up for us. Commissioner Bennett?
Thank you very much. Mr. Welch, are you familiar with this situation at all?
I am not, sir, no. I'm sorry. I am not familiar with this.
Would it be possible for you to take some time, I know you're swamped, but take some time during the next week or so to become familiar with this problem? The pictures kind of, I think, speak pretty loudly as to the problem. I'll just tell you that Teresa and her son did a very good job of explaining how concerned they are by this. I mean, and really, they are. They have people coming into their backyard constantly now, as a result of the location by us of their basketball hoop. And to get smoking away from the building, our building, we put it next to her building. And that has her trouble. She has a young family. And I wondered if you could, it'd be reasonable to ask if it's convenient, could you report back to us at the next meeting and kind of let us know what's going on here and what can be done to correct this for her?
I certainly will.
Would you? Thank you very much. Appreciate it. And Steve knows how to reach her. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Nanki?
Yeah, just to follow up on that, if it's our property, as far as cutting that mound down to grade level as well, might be a good thing.
We can do that.
They probably built it up so it was easier to get over the fence to get basketballs.
To get into her backyard, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, get back, get back.
Commissioner Benars?
I would hope, my comment is more than anything, I would hope that the next time a situation like this comes up, that we shouldn't have to come before the Salem Housing Authority or the City Council to get a resolution, that this is one of those, you know, things that we can go direct at the staff and say, hey, take a look at it, come back. Because it's just, this is a practical, day-to-day kind of issue that we'll have all across the city. If it isn't this, it'll be something else.
Okay. Now, I'd like to welcome our guest counselors. Kathryn Trotman in place of Mr. Anderson, and Matt Osick in place of Diane Dickey. Both are Back East, one in Nebraska, one in Atlanta, Georgia, one on work business and one on pleasure. So, welcome. Okay. Vice Chair Lewis, do you have a motion for me?
I do. I move acceptance of the consent calendar.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, that we approve the consent calendar. Vice Chair Lewis, you've got any comments for us?
Well, just a brief, under minutes, there's the minutes from the August 8th, 2016 Salem Housing Authority meeting. Under resolutions, 3.2A is the adoption of the fiscal year 2016-2017 operating budget and HUD certification. 3.2B is the approval of revisions to the administrative plan for Section 8 programs. And 3.2C is a Salem Housing Authority-City of Salem Intergovernment Agreement for City Services. Under action items, we have none, and under information reports, we have one, and that is the program management report. And I don't know if Andy has any comments at this point on it or not, if there's any questions. And that's it.
Okay. We've got a motion on the floor. It's been moved and seconded that we approve the consent calendar. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. As Vice Chair Lewis mentioned, we have one information report, a program management report. Anything, there's nothing there. It's basically showing, it's almost a total, full occupancy, and everything's being used.
There's a terrific demand for affordable housing, and that shows in our occupancy. And we hope to do something with that and have more affordable housing, so, but yeah, we're, it's very full.
Yep. The numbers show that. Okay? We have no special orders of business, no unfinished business, or no new business, so therefore, this meeting of the Housing Authority of the City of Salem is adjourned.
Good evening, everyone. I will call into session this evening's meeting for the Urban Renewal Agency for Monday, September 12th, 2016. With the recorder, please call the roll.
Board Member Bennett?
Here.
Guest Board Member Kathryn Trotman?
Here.
Board Member Nanki?
Here.
Board Member McCoyd?
Here.
Guest Board Member Matt Osick?
Here.
Board Member Benjamin?
Here.
Board Member Benars?
Here.
Board Member Lewis?
Here.
Chair Peterson?
Here. Thank you. I don't believe we have any additions or deletions to the agenda for this meeting, and no boards or, no reports from boards or commissions. So, we will proceed to public comment, and we have no one who's signed up. Is there anyone here this evening that wanted to comment during the urban renewal meeting? You want to wait for the council meeting?
Yeah.
Okay. That'll be right after this one. All right. Thank you. Okay. Then we'll move to the consent calendar. Member McCoyd, do you have a motion?
Yes, I do. I move approval of consent calendar.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved by council by Member McCoyd and seconded by Member Benars to move the consent calendar. Would you please describe the consent calendar to us, Member McCoyd?
That's here. That's here. That's in C. Madam Mayor, I'm too old to be distracted by somebody, so it's, it'll take me a minute to regroup. So, the consent calendar contains minutes of the August 8th and August 22nd, Urban Renewal Agency meetings. 4.3 action item, appointment, it's approving the appointment to the West Salem Redevelopment Advisory Board of Paul Sturzinger. And that is it. There's also information report with administrative purchases, July 1 through July 31.
All right. Thank you very much. There's a motion on the floor. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
I love it when we have minutes that show that we approved minutes.
All right. We have no special orders of business, and no public hearings, and no new business. The Urban Renewal Agency meeting is adjourned. All right. I will now call to order this evening's meeting of the Salem City Council for Monday, September 12th, 2016. With the recorder, please call the roll.
Counselor Bennett?
Here.
Guest Counselor Kathryn Trotman?
Here.
Counselor Nanki?
Here.
Counselor McCoyd?
Here.
Guest Counselor Matt Osick?
Here.
Counselor Benjamin?
Here.
Counselor Benars?
Here.
Counselor Lewis?
Here.
Mayor Peterson?
Here. Thank you. I believe we do have some additions or deletions to the agenda. Counselor McCoyd, would you please present a motion and describe those?
We do not have any additions or deletions, that I'm aware of. We do have a revision. I just asked. Yeah. He said that's not an addition or deletion.
I think we do.
The, the item.
We have a revision.
We have one deletion.
Oh, we do. You told me. I'm sorry. I apologize. We have one deletion, and that's item 3.3A, which has been pulled under action items.
Right.
As in removed from the agenda.
Removed from the agenda. I'm sorry.
That's okay. That's all right. And then a correction to the minutes.
No, we have a revision that was a correction of the minutes.
Okay. All right. So, it's been moved by Counselor McCoyd and seconded by Counselor Benars to adopt, or excuse me, to approve the additions and deletions. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We now have time for council and city manager comment. Do counselors have comments? Yes. Counselor Benars?
I had a wonderful day this morning, the start of the morning, with a tour of Salem Health's new care facility on the corner of Church and Mission, along with Counselor Nanki, which I hope you can add a few comments to the issue. We as well had an opportunity to go through some of the other buildings in the hospital dossier, one of which I was really, I had no idea was there, and I wanted to bring light to this community, and that is the Building D on the main floor has a resource center, much like a small library, but with very knowledgeable people, so that if you are looking for information about a disease, or condition, or mental, or something, and I know from experience that if you go on the Internet, oftentimes, what you find is very pessimistic. This resource center is going to be a reality, and hopefully get people in the right direction. It also has a test kitchen, or not a test kitchen, but a kitchen where they can teach people as well how healthy eating habits. We went around, then walked clear over to the new facility, toured it, and it's state-of-the-art. It is just wonderful. It was sad to see the white oak that the building actually was surrounded, it was designed to surround, but there's a beautiful maple that has been planted in its place. I think I heard over 150 trees were planted in that area. I know there was a concern way back when the place was being first worked on about the removal of trees, but 150 at least went in. Anyway, that's, our only hospital in our community, and it's, there are redundant services that they've put in, and they've worked really hard to try to maintain the nature of the scan neighborhood, the historic Gaydy Hill. And I applaud what they have done. It's a wonderful facility. I hope I never have to use it, though.
Thank you. Counselor Nanki?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. But what you can use is the new playground, which was fantastic, and actually, some of the rehabilitation with some of the children, actually interfacing with neighborhood children as well, and it's like, what's wrong with it? Can I play with them? And so, they're actually getting real good interaction, which helps their therapy as well, stuff. And fascinating, I wanted to play more. I only got to play with the one water pump thing.
You could go back.
But, yeah, wonderful. And the Resource Education Center, you can check books out, get a little library card for like, three weeks at a time, and they actually have health practitioners in there, so you can really be talking to a doctor, and it's free to everyone. Two other real quick ones. Get Ready Salem was Saturday morning. Good turnout, getting ready for Cascadia, or actually, any significant disaster in town. It's like, not a 72-hour kid anymore. It's, you need it two weeks. And then, thanks to Northwest Natural for hosting that, they had good hamburgers and hot dogs as well. And then, August 31st, Counselor McCoyd and I attended the ribbon cutting at Wilco on a commercial. And if things haven't changed, their grand opening is this Thursday, the 15th through Sunday, the 18th.
Oh, okay.
So, I don't have to drive to State anymore to go to Wilco. I'm pleased as punch it they're here. Encourage everybody to stop in and look what they got.
Great. Yes. Counselor McCoyd? Oh, sorry.
I would just add to that, it was great fun, that's a really cool store, but the thing that impressed me was, that's their 18th store, and they're doing $250 million a year in business. So, this is, it's not an insignificant company, even though you think of them in little communities around the state. There's 18 stores doing a lot of business, and it's great to have them in our community.
That's wonderful. I was so.
I'd buy that 10 years ago.
Yeah. I was so glad to see that building finally repurposed. Excellent. Counselor Benars?
I forgot, or I wanted to add, with the mentioning of the playground facility at the hospital, this coming Thursday, 15th seems to be a very busy day, but at 6:00 PM, there will be a ribbon cutting at that location, and invite people to come down and see what it's all about. High-quality accessible toys, which is a great thing. I also wanted to mention that on, also on September 15th, this coming Thursday, at 6:15 in the morning is the start of the grand opening of the new Goodwill in West Salem on the corner of Wallace Road and Edgewater. They'll have a ribbon cutting at 7 o'clock. There is a light continental breakfast there that'll be added, but it's a huge difference to the corner of Wallace and Edgewater. There's been many, many improvements to that area, and the ice areas that are there, or were there, are now gone. And I look forward to the added tax revenue, because it's not just the Goodwill store will be off the tax rules, but the other property, the other properties that are there for lease will be on the tax rules. It'll help that urban renewal district and West Salem in general.
Great. Counselor Bennett, followed by our guest. Okay.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wanted to mention, this Saturday at 9:00 AM at Riverfront Park is the Walk for Alzheimer's. It's an opportunity to assist in raising funds to fight that disease for, any of you have had a family member lost to that disease, it's a horrible thing. And hopefully, we can raise some money for that. It's a really good event. Then I want to just take a moment, if I could, to reflect on the life of Salem resident and educator Alice Yoshikai, who passed away on September 6th. Alice was devoted to education, serving as an assistant superintendent of schools, a principal, and a teacher. Yoshikai Elementary School is named in her honor. Alice was a key leader of the Salem Cowagoy Sister City Program, and until, which recently celebrated its 30th anniversary. She also received special honors at the June 2016 Anniversary Banquet for the Cowagoy Sister City Program. For those of you who met Alice, you know exactly what I mean when I say that she had a true gift to be at once very present with each person she met. She had a peace and graciousness about her that lifted all hearts. Her love of life, her belief in the beauty and potential of each child truly gifted the Salem community. Please join me in a moment of silence in honor of Alice Yoshikai's memory.
Thank you very much. Yes, Ms. Trotman?
Hi there. My name is Kathryn Trotman. I'm a local attorney here in town. Tom Anderson asked me to be his guest counselor today. I live in Ward 2, and I wanted to take this opportunity to talk briefly about a project I'm working on with Commissioner Janet Carlson. She's involved in the Marion County Reentry Initiative Program, and in meeting with her, it came to light that there's really no good way to harness volunteer energy in the community to go towards this reentry program. The reentry program is designed to kind of meet with, get people who have been recently released from jail or prison, and try to help them reintegrate into the community in a way that is safe for the community and also beneficial for the clients that are coming out of the system. And so, I'm trying to basically come up with a volunteer program. I'm kind of envisioning some sort of community workshops or classes that will be held. So, I'm looking for volunteers who may be interested in leading a workshop or leading a class, and I'm working with parole and probation on, you know, what kinds of things will be interesting for the clients and what things will be helpful. So, if anyone's at all interested in this, this project, or wants to get involved or anything like that, please feel free to contact me. There is a breakfast about this that happens every year. This year, it's October 25th. I think it's pretty full by now, but there may still be spaces, so if anyone wants to learn more about that, I'd encourage you to attend the breakfast. So, thanks again for having me today, and if you want to talk more about reentry, I'd be happy to do so. Thank you.
Excellent. And if people would like to specifically work with you on this project, what is the best way for them to contact you?
The best way would probably be my email. I have some business cards, so if anybody wants to come up to me after the meeting or anytime, I'm happy to provide my information.
For the millions of listeners.
Yeah. We're on television, so if you want to just give out your email address.
Yeah, I'd be happy to. So, it's C. Trotman, just my, it's C.T.R.O.T.T.M.A.N., and it's at NW-Attorneys.com.
Wonderful.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Well, thank you for doing that work. I know that the reentry initiative is a particularly successful program, even though it's in its infancy, when you think about the long-term program, but it really is a step in the right direction for integrating people back into the community.
I agree. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Lewis?
Yeah, I wanted to mention real quickly, yesterday, my wife and I found ourselves on the old railroad bridge, which we usually walk on the weekends, and we came on the bridge shortly after the car decided to take a swim in the Lamont River. And as we walked across the bridge very slowly and watched the activities of the morning, no fewer than three people mentioned how proud they were that the emergency services, the police department, was there so fast. And it was, it was very encouraging, very good to hear. I didn't ask, I didn't start the conversation, but people were talking about the satisfaction with the response time, and I thought that was very important.
Wonderful. Nelson Benars, did you have your hand up?
Yes, I did. There was one other thing I wanted to mention, and it made me proud to be a citizen and a leader in this community. This last week, I was, had the opportunity to host, or our community had the opportunity to host 14 individuals who'd had hosted 14 people from our community into India, and these 14 people from India were treated to many of the local activities that we have, from seeing the state capitol, to shopping at Woodburn Outlet Malls and the Oregon Garden, and just a wealth of, including, by the way, taking a nice dinner river cruise on the Lamont Queen, and it is so beautiful to see the city from the riverside upward with all the glistening lights, and later on, the reflections of the lights on the river itself. I just want to say, I'm proud of the community and everything that it has done to make it a livable place here. And it's really, really proud that those people ended up here. They now have moved on to seaside for a few days, and will end up in Portland for a few days before they fly back to India.
Wonderful. Wonderful. Well, it was a treat for me to be able to meet them at several events, and we are always welcoming, as an international city, we enjoy visiting groups and try to make them feel at home. So, thank you, Warren, for being a part of that. I have something, again, having to do with the bridge. I was driving across the bridge from downtown to West Salem on Sunday morning, and saw the beautiful display of U.S. flags that were on the bridge. I'm not certain who to thank. I think it's someone from.
We weren't able to find us.
We don't know exactly. I believe it was a veterans group, because I saw some people with red T-shirts carrying some flags that were coming out of Riverfront Park later in the day, and they had, I could read the word veterans, so, anyway, but it was a lovely sight, and I want to thank whichever organization out there was responsible, it added a lot to the day of remembrance. So, thank you to the individuals who made that possible. Okay. We now would normally have proclamations, and we have none today, and no presentations. It's time for public comment. And what I'm going to do, because we have a few people that signed up for the public comment that we normally have at the end of the meeting, but rather than have them wait all the way until the end, I thought we would just go ahead and ask them to provide their public comment at this time. And I'm going to start with Elwood Jones, and followed by Ed John. And you'll have three minutes. At the end of, two minutes, there's an amber light that comes on. Will that still operate on the podium? So that he can see the amber light? It does? Okay. Oh, good. All right. And then at the end of three minutes, it's the red light. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm just curious whose idea and whose let it go forward despite two bike lanes. And do they realize how dangerous they are? Do you have a comment, Ms. Mayor?
I don't, no. I know that they're in our transportation plan. I would look to our Director of Transportation for a comment.
Mayor Peter Fernandez, Public Works Director. I assume the gentleman is speaking of the High Street.
Through all the street, Church Street.
So, the new ones on, on High and Church?
High and Church.
So, so those have been in our transportation plan for, the idea of providing bicycle facilities through downtown has been a goal of the city for a very long time. Several years ago, there was the downtown circulation study that had extensive public outreach and comment that settled on being able to put in the bike lanes on High and Church to provide that, that facility. The council then, the council adopted that plan, and then ultimately funded that with urban renewal dollars, and they were constructed recently. So, so it's the result of a number of years of study and, and review, and ultimately adoption by the council.
And they are established within the guidelines that are necessary for us to follow with regard to the placement of bicycle lanes and traffic lanes?
That's correct.
And all of that. Mm-hmm.
Like on Church Street down there, you go to Center Street, cars have to cross over the bike lanes and everything to make a right-hand turn on to Center. I'm just using this as an example. Nowadays, there's, they say there's over a hundred and fifty people a week moving into the Oregon area. That's forty-five hundred a month. We have so much traffic problems with cars today. You're taking a lane away from each of these busy streets for a bicycle. Doesn't make sense. And people don't look when they get out of their cars, the way they got the parking. Bicycles will run into them. It just looks very dangerous to me. I've put about three million miles on my trucks, and I've never seen anything like this before. It's really none of my business. I don't drive or nothing. But it just seems very dangerous.
Well, we appreciate your comment. And of course, we're always evaluating the traffic condition. And when we make a change, such as adding the bicycle lanes the way we have, I know that our city is watching very closely to see how the drivers adjust to that, and how the bicyclists adjust, and the pedestrians. And so, I appreciate you bringing that comment to us. And you can be sure that we'll be watching very carefully to see just how well the community reacts to the, to the changes. Thank you very much.
I visited with quite a few policemen now, and they all dislike it very much. I've talked to a lot of drivers, just regular people. They, they don't understand it.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Cars are coming in today.
Well, thank you very much for your comment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh-huh. The next person signed up is Ed John. Welcome. Haven't seen you for a while. Missed you from the school district.
It's been a while. It seemed like last time we were together, we were in the homecoming parade.
Yes. Well, I, it was a while ago, but it's nice to see you here. Thank you for coming.
Madam Mayor and Councilmember, my name is Ed John. I'm the Special Ed Director at Lamont Education Service District. Our main building is at twenty-six eleven Pringle Road Southeast. We recently signed a seven-year lease to rent facility across the street, twenty-six hundred Pringle Road. And, and that building will have twelve classrooms and about forty-five staff members. The preschool special ed students will be in the classrooms, and they're not traveling across the street, obviously. But before classes start in the morning, and oftentimes, at the end of the school day, we'll have staff members that will come across the street to the main building for meetings and trainings, and meeting with the supervisor. So, we've requested that the city partner with us to build a crosswalk with a median at that facility, or at that location. And we're willing to make a contribution to that. And, but we appreciate your consideration and this important matter. Thank you.
Thank you for coming down. Does, do any counselors have questions of Mr. John this evening? Okay. Thank you so much. Charles Keen, followed by Carol Bengal.
Hi, John.
Welcome. And as I said before, you have three minutes. At the end of two minutes, the amber light comes on. At the end of three minutes, the red light comes on. And if you'll just, when you're ready, introduce yourself and give your address or your ward number, please.
My name's Charles Keen, one-four-one-seven East Park Avenue, Salem, Oregon. I've been a resident here since two thousand and six. I've done a lot of civil rights work in the area, a lot of assessments of facilities and programs and services for the disabled. I specialized in special education for the disabled. I specialize in all types of disability rights issues. I specialize in performing accessibility on programs and services for the disabled. I trained myself in the government training, the federal government training, to do this, to help the people. And you know what? I'm here tonight to tell you that I think that your city government lacks an efficient number of disabled employees on its payroll. And the reason why I'm saying that is because of physical barriers that you guys have, that your facilities and services and programs that are associated with disability rights, and your ability, and your inability to maintain them and establish accessibility over the years. If you, I feel, as a disability rights processor, advocate and profiler for governmental issues, that if you guys would have more, if our city government was to have more disabled individuals on our payroll, that were qualifying disabled individuals associated with the blind, hearing impaired, wheelchair, and other disabled individuals, and other issues associated with disabilities, they would assist, and they would be an assistive tool for your city government in maintaining and, and, and keeping accessible. They would assist not only your, your community, but also the others with, that come to receive services. They, when on their job, they would be requiring accessibility services, the disabled employees. That is good. That is enrichment for disabled individuals. That means that the customers and the clients are not required to state that they need assistance. Our accessibility matters, because your employees then would be the ones almost like advocating for them while performing their duties for the city. You guys just had American flags hung up on your city government for over a year. American flags that were known intentionally by Gretchen Bennett, Human Rights Director, to be intentionally hung up, hung up, hung up intentionally wrong and discriminately for the blind, and for the rest of the distressed as American citizens. I noticed, because I talked to Gretchen Bennett about it last September. And I know Gretchen Bennett took them down to fix them. And I know she put them right back up. And you know what? I know they've been a barrier for the disabled for a long time. And she walked around, she came in an adverse job position, and she hasn't done anything about it, until I brought it to your attention, for the people. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your testimony. Carol Bengal, followed by Richard Koenig.
Hi. My name is Carol Bengal. My residence address is fourteen-seventeen East Park Avenue. I'm here because I'm making a request that a member of the city council make a date and time for a meeting with Charles Keen. I, last year, September fifteenth, two thousand and fifteen, went on an ADA tour with Charles and Gretchen Bennett. Gretchen Bennett called my son at his home and requested him to come down here and give her an ADA tour. We met in the mayor's office, and we walked out. She looked right at my son. She said, "What I want you to do, Charles, is to show me the ADA violations at City Hall. And then we're going to go to the Salem Library. And then I want you to show me the ADA violations at the library." I went on that tour. Now, tonight, when I was walking in, I saw things that was violations of the blind that she never even adhered to. Nothing. The woman does not know her job adequately to represent the city of Salem. I'll tell you exactly what's going to happen. The city of Salem is going to end up getting a discrimination lawsuit from qualifying disabled people. Then you guys will be paying money out of your budget to settle with the disabled. That tour was full of things, just for the blind. I remember those flags. We showed them to her. She looked right at my son. And everything he would show her on that tour, she would look at him and think, "I didn't know that." I kept hearing from her, "I didn't know that." It is her job in the city of Salem to know the ADA. That is why you guys are paying her a salary. Now, she asked my son to come down and show her all these violations, because my son is an expert on ADA. He works, he even worked for FBI in the White House. He knows his stuff. And that's why she called him at his home and had him come down there, because she did not know the ADA violation that was at City Hall or at the Salem Library. There were so many violations, and there still are here at City Hall, that you're going to get lost in what's going to happen. And I'll tell you something. There were so many violations that she kept saying, "I didn't know that. I was on that tour. I know what I saw." And we, we never could do, do the tour at the Salem Library, because we had run out of time. There were so many violations here. And I'll tell you something. I am here tonight to tell the city council, you know, Salem, I love Salem. I'm a resident here. I don't want to see our city being tuned by disabled people. Ms. Bennett does not know her job. She's a good cover for it. And I realized that last year, when I went on that, that tour was September fifteenth, two thousand and fifteen, at two o'clock in the afternoon. I had that right nine button equipped at home. And I was on that tour. And I'll tell you, I want a member of the city council to schedule a date and time of last November to meet with Charles Keen, and wherever you're at, and discuss with him the ADA tour that I went on. And then you will see for yourselves that you are paying a wage to a woman that don't even know her job. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Richard Koenig?
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
City Council.
Welcome.
My name's Richard Koenig. It doesn't sound the way it's spelled.
Sorry.
I'm from, my address is Sherwood, Oregon. But I'm visiting down here, and I'm, I'm asking for a public record. I came last meeting. And to save you folks the time and expense of an envelope, I came to get my response to my request. And I'd like to, I'd like to remember Larry Silverstein first. Remember Larry Silverstein? He owned the, the complex that went, that, on two thousand and one, September eleventh, got blown away. And Larry Silverstein's Building Number Seven also went down. It's, it somehow got neglected by most of the press over the weekend, but it also went down, forty-seven-story building, steel frame. It just collapsed in its own footprint. So, let's take a moment for him. But I'd like to at least read the request for the record that I asked for. I'm asking for the requirement of licensing the general public to use the portion of the highways other known as, otherwise known as roadway for vehicular travel. I'd like to get the, the requirement for tiling and registration of the general public's vehicles, which is not operated on the highways of the state. I'd like to get the requirement of liability insurance in such manner as is described under ORS eight oh six point oh one oh. And it does say a person who operates a motor vehicle on the highways open to the public in that section. I'd also like to get the authority to require parking, parking fees. These are things that are, they're really hard to come by, and I, I really don't expect you to have them tonight. You have been enforcing them. And I know another gentleman over here, Mr. Moore, the chief. I was speaking with him at a meeting recently, and he didn't even know where his authority to enforce these laws comes from. So, whenever you find them, he needs to know as well as I do. But maybe tonight, we could at least agree upon someone we trust, who we will go to, to find these authorities that require the general public to pay for, well, it was determined to be a right. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. We appreciate you coming down. Thank you. All right. I don't see anyone else signed up. We're going to move on to the consent calendar. And Counselor McCoy, do you have a motion to present the consent calendar?
Yes, I do, Madam Mayor. I move approval of the consent calendar with the following poll, item three point three C by Counselor Bennett.
It's been moved by Counselor McCoy and seconded by Counselor Benars to adopt the consent calendar with the one item of three point three B being pulled by Counselor Bennett. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Oh, I'm so sorry. You would like to describe the consent calendar, wouldn't you?
Yes, I would, Madam Mayor.
All right. Thank you.
If I may. We've got the minutes of the August twenty-second council meeting. We also, there was one correction as we revisioned to the minutes as we stated. Under resolutions, we have three point two A, which modifies the terms of the Housing Authority Commission members, reappoints members, accepts and accepts the resignation of Commissioner Carol Vaev, and declares the resident commissioner position vacant. What this basically does is align the terms of the commissioners with the terms of the city councilors. So when their city council term ends, their term on the Housing Commission ends. They were not linked before, which was causing some confusion.
The listeners are inspired.
Yes. Rep appointments to the Salem Hospital Facility Authority Board is three point two B. It reappoints Robert Omar, Michael S. Compton, and Steve Hunter to the board of the Salem Hospital Facility Authority. Three point two C changes the auditor selection process for the city of Salem. We would adopt Resolution two sixteen forty-three to amend Council Policy C four and the city's public contracting rules to allow the council, the city council, to select the city's provider of audit services. Previously, this had been delegated to the city manager. And in discussions at the Finance Committee, this proposal came about that probably to make sure that there was no question on, on, on selection of process, and take it out of, take the heat off the city manager, the city council would, would approve city auditors moving forward. And it's for a five-year contract when we do so. Three point two D is the intergovernmental agreement with Polk County for Mobile Response Crisis Team, and adopts the fiscal two thousand and sixteen supplemental budget. This authorizes the city manager to execute the attached intergovernmental agreement with Polk County, and any amendments to that agreement in order to provide Mobile Response Crisis Team services. It also authorizes the addition of one full-time police officer in the Salem Police Department to staff the Mobile Response Crisis Team. And it includes supplemental budget one, increasing expenditure, expenditure appropriation authority, and revenues in the amount of two hundred and nine thousand, three hundred and seventy dollars, which is the amount Polk County will pay the city to provide that service and hire that officer. Under action items, three point three B is the funding and project approval for a pedestrian crossing median at twenty-six hundred block of Pringle Road Southeast. This is, Mr. John discussed this before. It's for the Lamont Education Service District to be able to provide a safe access for their staff crossing to their new, their new program and their new building on the other side of the street. They will contribute thirty-five thousand dollars towards the expense, and the city will provide the rest. Three point three C is, oops, that's pulled. Three point three D is a claim settlement authorization. It authorizes the city manager to resolve the matter of the estate of Chase Hammer versus the city of Salem in an amount not to exceed one hundred thousand dollars. Payment will be made from the city's self-insurance claims fund. Three point three E is an intergovernmental agreement with the Housing Authority of the city of Salem for city administrative services that we approved at the Housing Authority meeting. And this, this authorizes the city manager to execute that agreement with the Housing Authority to provide administrative support, finance payroll, fleet services, human resources, information technology, legal purchasing, real estate, repro graphics, and urban development support for this fiscal year two thousand and sixteen and seventeen. Three point three F is reappoint- 3.3F is reappointments to the city Budget Committee and the Salem Urban Development Community Services and Housing Commission, and that's Clark Haslett for the Budget Committee representing Ward Six, and Joan Lloyd for the Salem Urban Development Community Service and Housing Commission. We thank them for their service. Madam Mayor, that is it for the consent calendar.
Wonderful. Thank you very much for that very thorough presentation. We appreciate that. All right, we have the motion on the floor. All those in favor of adopting the consent calendar, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. We have no public hearings this evening, and so to special orders of business, we will move to the item that was pulled. And Counselor Bennett, do you have a motion?
I do, Madam Mayor. I move the staff recommendation.
All right, you moved the staff recommendation, and was there a second? Thank you. It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Benars. Counselor Bennett, would you like to speak to your motion?
I would, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, this is a great program. This is the opportunity to use the Healthy Eating and Active Living Grant Cities Grant Program, and the proposal by the city is to use it for bicycle racks and a bicycle repair station in seven of our city parks. It's a really excellent program. There are, I am concerned, potential flaws in this program, and I want to bring them up. I think they were shared with us by Angela O'Bree from the bicycle advocacy group we have here in town, and I thought her issues were well taken. The first that I'd like to speak to, and I think the primary one right now, is making sure that the bicycle racks we're talking about are the correct bicycle racks. She has shared a proposal with the city, or a brochure rather, with the city that describes bicycle racks that don't wreck bicycles and actually secure them and do it in a variety of configurations of bicycles, like those with baskets and other things. One of the ones that is commonly used in the city, as I understand it, is referred to as the bent wheel rack, and you can kind of imagine what that's all about. It's as you try to get your bike out, or someone messes with your bike, you end up with a bent wheel because of the configuration of it. And what I would ask is that as Public Works or the Parks folks look at this, that you consult that brochure. These are very common bicycle racks. There's the staple rack, which is the real simple, kind of rounded one. There's a kind that sort of sets up two, and I can't remember the term for it, but there's a place on each side for you to attach your bicycle. And she had a couple of others that it's sort of the do this, don't do this kind of proposal in her proposal. I think one of the things that this pointed up to me, and I'm just asking that you do this, and I'm sure you'll agree that it's no reason not to, that I don't think there's a tremendous, it may well be even cheaper. But since we're going to spend this, let's make it what the bicyclists would like to have that work well. I realize that one we installed at our office is the really successful bent wheel variety, so I'm going to suggest to our building that we take a look at another one. But I think in addition, and this really runs to other, really to Mr. Gross's department, I'm really wondering if we shouldn't take a look in the future, and I'll maybe bring this up later, at a kind of bicycle code. There are just a whole batch of things now that we're, and I think the gentleman who spoke earlier talked about our bike lanes. We're putting in bike lanes. We're coloring them. We're doing things in that area, and it will be interesting to take a look at how to standardize those. These bike racks, the kind of things associated with bicycling. I think it just might be interesting to take a look, to bring in some folks understanding it. But in this case, I really ask that you take a close look at satisfying Ms. O'Bree's proposal. I think what she's saying is extremely well taken and worth following.
Thank you. All right. The motion on the floor by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Benars. Is there any further discussion or any questions regarding the motion? Counselor Lewis?
I'm going to vote for the motion because I think what's being asked is good, but I'm reaching a point, it's been almost two years now, and in my sense, I think the city tries to do a lot for the bicycle community, whether it be the Union Street or the Bicycle Pass we heard about tonight. But I have yet to hear from the folks a offer to financially support these adventures. And I'm personally getting to the point where I think it's time for those that are being benefited to step up and help pay for it, because the city can only do so much.
Other questions or comments by counselors? Counselor McCoy?
I'd be curious to hear from staff, what they think about Counselor Bennett's observations. I mean, is it accurate, or do we just go to a one kind of bike rack, and that's our go-to bike rack? And...
Well, first of all, this is just an application for a grant, so we'd have to win the grant first. Assuming that we do, then I think we'd want to look at, you know, where we're installing them. Some of these are near schools, so are there racks that are more beneficial to children, to smaller riders? And yeah, we'll look at, I mean, there's a million designs. We've used the staple quite a bit, which is the black one that you see downtown. You know, people, downtown merchants have enjoyed doing bike racks in, you know, whimsical shapes, you know, that mostly advertise their business, so, you know, I don't know how good they are, but they're cute on the sidewalk. So yeah, we'll look at, we'll look at Ms. O'Bree's email, you know, when we win the grant, and take a look at that. I mean, clearly, installing a bike rack that doesn't fit or isn't used very well, or isn't used because people can't, you know, don't feel secure using them, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense. So we'll certainly take a look and see if we can find the right ones.
Okay. Any further discussion on this motion? The motion on the floor, all those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. All right. I'd like to direct your attention to the information reports. There are four information reports in the agenda this evening. One having to do with purchases approved administratively. The second one is the annual evaluation of the city of Salem floodplain management plan. The third is a planning commission decision report to council. And the fourth one is a hearings officer decision report to the council. So I encourage you, if you have questions on any of the information reports, please see the appropriate staff or the city manager. We have no ordinances or first readings or second readings, and we've already had public comment. We have no new business. But under Mayor's items, I have two items, and the first is 9.1A, announcing the appointments of counselors Jim Lewis and Daniel Benjamin to the Housing Choices Advisory Committee. And it is a recommendation, and the committee is being formed under the Community Development Department, and will be working on code revisions to allow more, greater variety of housing choices, right? Housing styles and choices. So I appreciate both counselors being willing to serve on that. And then my second item has to do with the appointments to the Salem Human Rights and Relations Advisory Commission, and that report is in your agenda. And we have one counselor's items this evening from Counselor Bennett, item 9.2A. Counselor Bennett, would you like to introduce your item?
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. I move the city create a task force to review the issues, evaluate the options, and return to city council with recommendations regarding how to proceed with developing updated floodplain maps. I further move the mayor appoint three or four counselors to be members of this task force.
All right. And is there a second? Was there a second?
Yeah.
Yes, Counselor Nanki.
Thank you, Counselor Nanki.
All right, thank you. Counselor Bennett, would you like to discuss your motion?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, thank you very much. You'll recall, we had a work session on all of this on July 18 to begin looking at updating the city's 2000 stormwater master plan. It's an extensive data collection, survey, stormwater modeling. There was a great deal of information presented to us, both specific and kind of characterizing, I guess would be the way to describe it, but not actually describing specifically what the floodplain changes would look like. They were kind of trying to demonstrate how this information was going to work. And in that discussion, which I think is a really complicated issue, and that one that involves a whole bunch of people's, other people's insurance payments, we began talking about updating floodplain maps to kind of help FEMA with the problems that they appear to have, the federal government. And I became concerned at that time, and it's the reason I'm asking for this task force, that I'm not sure that's our role. And I would like to take another look at it. I'd like to spend some time as a council task force with some members, some citizen members. I'd love to have somebody who understands flood insurance real well, who has some sort of, along with our city staff, but has a working knowledge of kind of FEMA's role. And I guess a great deal of it is because my ward down in Ward One gets a lot of flooding. These hundred-year floods are becoming about a four-year, two- to four-year event, and with that level of flooding occurring, and what I think is still a master stormwater plan in study and influx being developed, and with really only one of our basins that feeds so heavily into the water system, into all the creeks in town, the Battle Creek Basin, I think it's really time we kind of stop as a council, not the staff, but as a council, kind of stop and examine this and the kind of policy issues around, number one, assisting FEMA, number two, being the nine people who vote to raise some people's tax insurance payments $10,000 a year, and close off certain parts of town to development. Oh, by the way, they've been developed now for 100, 150 years. I think there's just so much at stake here. I really, I guess as a counselor, would like to have the time and the really in-depth look at this so that we understand it before we start moving on changing maps, because it has real implications. Doesn't mean we shouldn't, but I want to make sure everything, there's just nothing, that these, any decision we make is absolutely bulletproof in terms of it being the right answer for the individual homeowner, the individual business owner, property owner, renter. And I just hope we can all agree, this may be a way to go. And if the task force can't solve it, at least we've got our staff to rely on to take us there. So I hope you'll support this motion.
Great. Thank you very much for that discussion. Counselor Benars?
So I am really grateful that Counselor Bennett brought this issue back up to us after the work session. I took it upon myself to contact not only an insurance carrier in our community, but also an insurance broker, a broker being someone who goes out and goes to different companies to find the best deal for their clients, and asked the question about flood insurance in known flood areas. And the information that we were given that night doesn't seem to jive with the information that I received. So I highly recommend or highly support the fact that on this committee should be somebody from the insurance who's highly, you know, who's got a high sense of knowledge of the issue, be appointed along with this. Because I find misinformation, what's out there, tens of thousands of dollars per year, kind of twists our mind on making our decisions on things when it may not have as much of an effect. I heard much lower numbers than that. But I don't know the exact truth, and I don't know the exact number there, but I think it would be very important to have that individual on the committee. So I am going to support this. I think it's something we need to look into and consider, because we are having quite a few floods that are affecting quite a few neighborhoods in our community, including in my ward as well.
Great. Thank you. Counselor McCoy?
I'll support this as the, this counselor with the one flood basin that has had the study. I want to make sure that it's right, and we're not blazing a path here that, you know, to the detriment of the folks in the Battle Creek area in Ward Four. But I also agree, and most of the waters going through my ward ends up in Counselor Bennett's ward anyway, so...
We should model that.
But I do think it's important. I think we need to make sure we know exactly all the facts. I think what Counselor Benars says is great. And take a slow path to this instead of a quick one, and make sure we're doing the right thing for the city long term.
Great. All right. Thank you very much. All right, there is a motion on the floor. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you very much, Counselor Bennett. And we certainly will, with dispatch, create the task force.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. I see no further business coming before the council, and we are adjourned.